We'll call the meeting to order, February 27th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ashby, Mayor Proton Jones.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Sauer.
Here.
Councilman Marshall.
Here. Stand for the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any amendments or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation. Now, Burris.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, Councilman Howard Jones from the City Council. Going up our seventy-seven, no, they can go up, said in prison. I have two items. First item you get, Act Nine, Congratulations Point, which in action to Hoochie, and the Mick and Time with, Time with Thriller, they've seen. Second, I'd like to bring your attention to something that happened last, Councilman Smith. And thank this, kind of show, kind of respect to the public coming through the City Council's people. Last week, my nephew, Stephen Cody, mentioned back to us about the longer no line of citizens in Centralia. Mayor just answered, "Well, there's no, there's no line of citizens in Centralia, clearing states on line measure back to Centralia." That's true. And second, he mentioned back about doing business. You gave Walmart, I wanted Walmart, Walmart, 1.3 million dollars incentive, and that's what it comes about, getting incentive business, come to town and do things. Now, how you give a firm that's at 16 million dollars, or 1.3 million dollars, that's beyond me. Walmart shouldn't got to die. There's a service station in town, because of Walmart, in the town, that sells 10,000 gallons, that's per month, because of Walmart. And you'll find other businesses that offend you. But what I'm getting at, the public coming for you, you should be receive the gracious and not get little people. And what he said was true. Both ideas say it. He said, "The line of map, you don't have one," and second, "I'm saying that you get business here." So what I'm saying, use some little protocol and address the public. Show them respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Marla, that's all the youth commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to make some presentations based on an event that the youth commission had a couple of weeks ago now, I guess, was the Eat To Compete. And so if any of the youth commission individuals are here, senior commissioners. What we did a couple of weeks ago was, the youth commission had an Eat To Compete event, which was our fundraiser, that this was our third one, and as kind of what we're accustomed to doing, is we pick certain groups to donate to, okay? And so the groups that were picked, the young people picked these groups, and since it was a competition between Centralia and between Mount Vernon, we had two jars that were there that could receive donations. And so what we made, a percentage of it was designed to go to the nonprofits that they had picked. And so for Centralia High School, they picked Centralia Cares. And for them, and if anyone is here from Centralia High School, Centralia Cares, and we were able to donate to them 318 dollars and 50 cents. This included 200 dollars from the funds of the grade, also from 118 dollars and 50 cents that went into the jar as a donation. And so we would like to present to Centralia High School Cares, and this is a group in the high school that helps students at school that are in need of whatever. And so we want to present to you 318 dollars and 50 cents.
Just in case you've never heard of CHS Cares, one of our big fundraisers throughout the year is No Shade November, where teachers hold fundraisers in their classrooms, students donate money throughout the entire month of November, and then we'll take that money. I think this year we've raised over 5,000 dollars to go out and buy 50 dollar gift cards. And then at Christmas time, we give those out to students in need. We have, throughout the year, but mainly Christmas time, but throughout the year we've had students who have suffered hardships, loss of parents, homes destroyed by fire or whatnot. So we've been able to help those kids, not just with money for clothes, but groceries, and trying to help them out any way we can. So this will be put to good use. Thank you very, very much.
Also, in contact with the Mount Vernon High School, they picked a group to receive the funds, and that was Lifeboat Alliance. All right. Also, part of the, the funds that were raised, the Need To Compete, 200 dollars, and then the fifth jar also, which made a total of 210 dollars and 50 cents, that's going to Lifeboat Alliance.
I would just like to thank you and let you know that we are a homeless shelter in Mount Vernon, and we do provide shelter to those in need in your county as well. So if you ever encounter someone needing help, please send them our way. Thank you.
Couple of other donations that we were able to make, and one was to Walmart Missionary Baptist Church. They had an unfortunate incident, and so the youth commission wanted to make a donation to them. And so if anyone is here from Walmart, and it's a 50 dollar donation, to help with their
We appreciate everything we can get. We've been doing this now for about five years, and we help around 50 to 60 families a month, not just from Walmart, a lot of them are. We don't have any restrictions on where they come from, we'll help anybody that needs it. And 100% of everything we take in goes back out. We have no paid staff overhead or anything, so I encourage you, it will be put to very good use. Thank you.
Final donation was made to Second Baptist Church, and they did that for the few times that we've had the event Eat To Compete, we have done the cooking at Second Baptist Church. And so they wanted to make donations to them, and the amount of 50 dollars also, to help with that. And so we certainly appreciate, none of our youth are here, and we know that they're quite busy, but we had a bunch of kids there, learning how to cook. Some was their first time in the kitchen, but we had a good time. And certainly for the parents of any of you here from, or any of the young people who want to thank you for allowing them to participate with the youth commission. And also, as a bonus to the youth commission, the Mountain Woodsman, I'm not sure if it's a corporation or what, but anyway, they set up to match anything that we made up to 500 dollars. And so we made a total of 631, 32 dollars. And so we got a 500 dollar donation from Mountain Woodsman, and we certainly want to thank them for that. And thank you all for your participation. Thank you.
Next, Linda Morgan would come to the front.
I stand for class, Linda Morgan. On behalf of the mayor and city council, for over 14 years of dedicated service to the City of Centralia Fire Department, July 15th, 2002, to February 24th, 2017. Thank you for all your hard work.
I just want to say thank you, it's been a wonderful job, and I really appreciate the fire department, because they, them guys have been so good to me, and very respectful and everything. I really appreciate it.
Would anybody else like to speak to the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. One, approval minutes of February 13th, 2017, city council meeting. Two, approval payroll vouchers in amount of 884,813.92. Three, approval request for use of Lake Centralia for the Southern Illinois All-Star Fishing Club. Four, a resolution regarding closer, closed session minutes, excuse me. Five, a resolution confirming appointment of certain individuals to various boards and commissions of the city in Centralia. Six, a resolution approving the temporary closure of various streets for the Locust Street Historical Fair. Seven, a resolution approving temporary closure of streets for the Centralia Art and Wine Festival. Eight, approval request to use February Park for the American Cancer Society for the 2017 Relay For Life Event. Nine, a resolution approving an agreement with Brian Atchison regarding his employment as chief of police. Any people?
I'm moving to approve consent agenda items one through nine. I'll second.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Smith, and a second by Councilman Marshall to approve items one through nine under consent agenda. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones? Yes. Six, reports and communication, before we, no reports and communication, before we bring seven and bring Brian up, Danny wants to.
First of all, I want to thank everybody. It's amazing how many people came and support Brian this evening, and obviously, deservedly so. But with council and the audience, giving a little back history, those people that know Brian, you know, they know that he's been on the force, I think going on 28 years now. A joke that was ironic, that the three panelists that was on the police commission back in 1990, is when he became a patrolman with the city of Centralia, and he's worked his way up, through a patrolman to sergeant, lieutenant. And he's an interesting individual, that he just wants to do, he just wants to do the job. He wants to do it, and he wants to do it right, taking everything in consideration. When Chief Evans retired in 2014, he had told me that he didn't have any interest in it, he felt that he was best served right there, staying in that position. And then when Chief Kretzinger retired, this last September 1st, or after about two and a half years of serving as the chief, basically Brian told me the same thing again, that I don't have a big interest in it, I got a job to do, early tickets, like I've been running the department anyway. But he did agree to serve on an interim basis. Very shortly, we see in life how we change our minds on things. And once, after a short period of time, he came up with Chief Kretzinger and said, "Danny, there's something in me that's telling me that this is the right thing, and I think I can help continue to make our department even a better department, working with the citizens and the existing police officers." And once again, we all know it's training through the years, what Brian's done, and his management command stuff, and it's been reported in the paper. At that time, I'd already stated that we'd be going out for applications. And I want you to know, there's a couple officers at least, that would have got high consideration, and were given high consideration at the last time. But with Brian, I knew in my heart that I wasn't wanting to waste anybody's time, and I felt like, the only time you bring somebody out from within, not from within, is, you know, when it's best to go outside, and I was convinced that wasn't the thing to do. And so September until the last week here, to be perfectly honest, I wanted to watch and see how Brian was doing and handling it, and at the same time, he told me twice he didn't want it, so I wanted to make sure he wasn't going to change his mind on me again. And everything that happened, everything that's happened, he handled fair, courteous, strong when he needed to be strong. And at night, I thought about it a lot, I talked to a lot of people, not directly, I talked to the council, and the mayor, talking about different things, and Brian and I had many, many meetings about where the city's going, and things much more ahead on where a police department needs to go in the new centuries, the new decade, and, you know, from cameras that we're doing. And if you notice right now, things, you know, there's more, you know, there's a lot going on. You know, all this stuff, we'll say we'll start with Doug, but I feel like we're continuing going in the right direction. And so before we get going with the oath here with the city clerk, I feel very, very strongly, I know that Brian, the entire time I didn't show, and told him I just had to know in my heart it was the right thing, I knew what I wanted to do. I think if people know me, that they know that's how I operate. And I know this evening, he's got his wife and two sons here, and now he got a big surprise with one of them that's in the military, being able to get home, and so he was like, ever since he found that out, he's been just, I don't think the smiles got off of him, and I know he's been not feeling good for a few days here. And with that, at the same time, when that decision was made, I immediately told him, I don't know how I did this quietly, but I told him at the same time to go ahead and send me a formal request, to go ahead and ask the police and fire commission, which works in the group, to hire another police officer, and get on board as soon as possible. And I think I had it up there, I think he called Connie from home and got it up there to get signed. And so things are moving, and with that, I'm convinced he's going to be a good chief for many years to come. Chief Kretzinger, before, we had a long talk, he's always endorsed him as his replacement of saying, Doug's a little political, but he said, "Danny, he's going to be a real good one," on the whole thing. I know he helped Doug out when he was there, and so with that, I just, it's made me feel very, very good about this appointment. And so I just felt I needed to say those words, and again, I appreciate everybody that's came here this evening, to show their support, because the police department needs the support in the officers, not just the chief, they need the support, you know, from the public, and, man, it's just a good feeling, you just can feel it in the air, that things are going to continue to get better, like I feel like they are in many other ways. And with this, I think we're probably time to bring up Brian and his family here.
I state your name.
I am Brian Atchison.
solemnly swear.
I'm wishful.
to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
To solemnly, to discharge the duties.
To discharge the duties.
of the chief of police.
Of the chief of police.
To the best of my abilities.
Wow, I don't know that I've been in a room when it's been this full for a council meeting. That just speaks worlds. Thank you so much, all of you, for coming. I really look forward to this. Everything that Danny said was very, very kind words, I appreciate very much, but all of you are very true. This is an opportunity, I want to thank, you know, my family, Zach getting me a surprising And the department, you can see by so many representatives of the department that are here, that I've had overwhelming support as interim chief, and every bit of that was because of the help from within. And people always come to me, "What can I do to help? What can I do to help?" And I know that's going to continue. The department, if you've noticed, has just done an outstanding job. If you read the newspaper, they're doing what they're trained to do. There's been numerous drug arrests, we've recovered six guns that I can think of off the top of my head in the last month or so. Anytime you can make the town safer, that's what we're here for. I would like to thank the council, every one of you has been supportive, and talked to me, and, you know, told me that, you know, how good a job I did as interim chief, and that all again with helping with my department. So we have a lot of plans to look at different programs and things. One is to look at some software that's going to help us keep track of people that are intelligence information. And just, training has increased, we've added now online training. It's hard for officers to get away, we don't like our officers going out of town to train, so we're taking advantage of online training. So those are just some of the examples, and again, thank each and every one of you for being here, and for your support. We could call you chief before Tom. All right, we'll move on to agenda. Beds, no beds, we'll move on to ordinances. Orderance one, an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing city manager to solicit bids for sale of surplus real estate. Lot 20 of Raccoon Lake, 16th Edition, 1630 Moon Glow Road.
We discussed this before, and glad to see it on the agenda finally. I'll move nine and one.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Sauer, and a second by Councilman Smith, to approve an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the sale of surplus real estate. Lot 20, Raccoon Lake, 6th Edition, 1630 Moon Glow Road. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Yes. Two, an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for sale of surplus real estate. Lot 8 of Raccoon Lake, 7th Edition, Hummingbird Lane, Mercy Road.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Smith, and a second by Councilman Marshall, to approve an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property, and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the sale of surplus real estate. Lot 8 of Raccoon Lake, 7th Edition, Hummingbird Lane, Mercy Road.
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Yes. Three, an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for lease of surplus real estate. Lake Centralia Lake, site T4, 1954 Lee Lane.
So I'll move. I'll second.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Smith, and a second by Councilman Marshall, to approve an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the lease of surplus real estate. Lake Centralia, lease site T4, 1954 Lee Lane. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Yes. Four, an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the sale of surplus real estate. 120 Clemore.
I'll move, we'll pass.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Marshall, and a second by Councilman Sauer, to approve an ordinance declaring certain real estate a surplus property, and authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the sale of surplus real estate. 120 Clemore. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Yes. Five, an ordinance annexing certain real estate into the city limits of the City of Centralia, Clinton County, Illinois.
I'll move. Second.
Call the robe.
I have a motion by Councilman Smith, and a second by Councilman Sauer, to approve an ordinance annexing certain real estate to the city limits of the City of Centralia, Clinton County, Illinois. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Yes. Ten, no resolutions. Eleven, other business. Twelve, unfinished business. Move on to thirteen, report, city clerk.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
City treasurer.
I just want to update the council on state owed money. At the current time, Murray Center is current on all their water bills, and the Correctional Center, it continues to be four months in arrears, you know, for October through January at this point, for a little over 150,000. State income tax, they're two months in arrears for a total of 241,000, but all other state revenues are current.
Any questions? City manager?
Yes, I gave the council copies of the grant award that the city received from Ida. Again, if you recall, a totally different grant that had to be with a social agency, which we partnered with BCMW, where they do the administration. This year, the city with the, I want to appreciate Ella Harding for the work that she did on it, we put another application together, under another program through Ida, for a 50,000 dollar grant, that actually the city would take care of just internally. And so obviously, any dollars that we can get like this, is that much that we can, you know, take this out of general fund, or do more projects with. And so still some paperwork to get done, but they made that award about a week and a half ago, on the whole thing, so. Next thing I want the council to know, and I gave copies of it, that under Ida's, IHDA's website this month, it shows a lot of information about the city. that under Ida's, IHDA's website this month, it shows a lot of information about the city of Centaria. Representatives came down a couple of different times. They decided to put the information of Centaria, you know, which they're showing, you know, some houses and the loan program that we're working on and, you know, different things of this nature, talking to the mayor, myself and Gala regarding the city, which I think that's a big honor, as well as in March here, the mayor's going to be part of a four-panel mayor's panel to speak about things that we're trying to do. And we'll be listening to other mayors and people in attendance on doing things through Ida. And so Ida has been a very, very, very good partner with the city the last two or three years. So that's just kind of part of what's on that website that I gave you a copy of. If you go to their website, though, you listen to the mayor talking about everything. But I feel very, very good about actually, you know, them saying Centaria and them saying that things are turning here. And I'm feeling that good enough where they actually focus Centaria on their state website. But I feel better, more important about getting the $50,000 on the whole thing. Next thing that I want to bring up is the city is not required to actually formally bid for vehicles. But that doesn't mean we don't get prices. But, you know, we always, we always get and look at what the state bid comes in at, which is everybody, you know, could be a distributor, not distributor, but a dealer somewhere in the state of Illinois, that they'll get a bid. But if it's close at all, obviously, I think the council, I don't know, I don't think, because they've told me that, you know, if it's reasonable at all, we want to keep our money here. This year, in the budget, we put in for three pickup trucks. One tons, I'm sorry, half tons, and one, one ton. And we received bids from both dealerships, both from Munkins and LTD. And with, when I say bids, quotes on the whole thing. On the half ton, on the half ton, which is referred to as F-150 with an eight-foot bed, LTD bid $24,300 apiece. Munkins with the Chevy Silverado, which they refer to as Silverado 1500 with a long bed. Basically, these are stripped-down vehicles. You got air conditioning, that's basically it. But we do want an eight-foot bed, you know, it's a short bed. They bid $21,299 each. So there's like $3,000, $1 difference between, and there's three of those. We bid for a one-ton for the water department, for chassis to go on it. We need the heavier duty. LTD bid $350, it was a quote for $350 for a one-ton, which is a one-ton of $37,500. Munkins is $3,500, Silverado is their one-ton, $28,599. About $8,400 difference. Which again, you know, when you get into vehicles, you can never get apples to apples and somebody can... But the, you know, it simply is this, even though I'm very strongly a Ford man, the, as many people I'm sure would say, "I want the Chevys better anyway." But the truth is, the Chevys, and Jeff has told me very strongly that, you know, just give me any trucks. But those other trucks, those other trucks will more than do, do the job. And I'm sure 50% of the people out there would say they're equal or better anyway. But that's about a $17,000 difference on all the vehicles. And with them being, and again, I think I questioned that with the attorney, but let's, the councils, you know, because we're not formally going out for bids. We're taking quotes. And again, I don't, you know, with that, I'm not wanting to receive, you know, we know what the state bids are and we want to keep them right here in town. We all, you know, and so advertise them, and it's not required. But, you know, Jeff actually hand-delivered the proposal for quotes by hand. And so this particular time, I feel like the numbers are very, very good in this particular time. Many times they're not. And so once again, let's, like, council is asking me to hold off or anything, I plan to go ahead and purchase those four vehicles to let you know, okay? Last thing I've been working with the, yeah, before I get to that. And so that thing I want the council to be aware of, you know, it's been, it's been, I don't know the exact date, but about a year, the Swan Corporation. And we talk about things with the Industrial Commission, et cetera. But I've had some recent talk, and I know Kev has been down at the factory at different times and everything. But, and here, I can't remember the exact date, but we're having, but the mayor's very strong on training and reimbursement, trying to set that up. And one day in March, we're having a luncheon for some of the industries. Then we're going to have one for some of the other businesses to help them get, if they want to participate with WEA through the Department of Commerce, Community Affairs, about training the people more, or for new employees, to get a negotiated reimbursement back on their need of training on the whole thing. And so we're trying to reach out and do some things of that nature with our local industry. But point on the whole thing, today it hit me that, you know, originally, and I'm not sure, and I'll get this information to the council, but the Moore family, I think, purchased that place in 1967, and it was pretty new right at that stage. And I think they may have a small part of the share of the company now. But now it's owned by a different group. And the most important thing is, I've been assured that their intentions are to stay right here in Centaria. They're pleased with everything. We're working on a little correction that was done, made 20 years ago on some property out there when we straightened, when the city straightened up Swan Drive. But owner and legal staff say, "Dan, we don't want to do nothing. Stay in Centaria. Make it bigger and better." We want to convince them to bring their administrative headquarters here, but that's all down the line at the same time in the future. I'll be asking the mayor to bring something for the years of service and commitment that the Moore family has done owning that. Because, you know, they've survived, you know, when Rockwell was here in Cambridge and Swan's still sitting there. And some of the family members are, you know, are starting to get older. And they've been a big backbone for the city of Centaria. And the last thing that I want to bring up is the, council recalls, the fire department, which we've been going through some repair issues there, but we've agreed to hire some part-time people. We've worked out and we're getting ready to meet very shortly. Again, with the, ultimately, the city manager still does the firing, the final hiring of the person, you know, the part-time person. But we're going to start putting some part-time officers in there. With that, we currently, you know, at 18, and when Captain Crook retired, I think we found a 17. We just got another retirement notice on the whole thing. And so ultimately, I'm not sure exactly when, because, you know, I've told everybody to work as long as they feel like they want to work on the whole thing. But with that, that's not going to slow us down. We're starting to put people in part-time and get them training. And I think the end result, what I said before, is going to be that I truly think we're in a better department, more people. And at the same time, and after a period of time, I'll start cutting some of the costs and continuing to work and get more done with less money in different areas. And so anyway, you're going to see some new firemen around in the not-too-distant future, you know, future on the whole thing. And so things are going, things are going pretty good. And I know some of these things, and you call me and tell me, but I just don't want you to see some, somebody on the street and say, "Danny, why didn't you tell me?" But I feel very good. I want the council to know this, that I love energy. I know you share that with me, you know. And I'll go back to Brian's thing. He's got the, you know, right now, he's focusing energy, you know, just like Doug and I did. We agree. Sometimes we agree to disagree. I feel very good that, you know, putting hands of the police department completely in Brian's hands is going to turn into benefits. And when I'm saying that, and I think you kind of did, it's still going to take the citizens of this town to cooperate and to tell and see what they see. I mean, we, you know, they get that out there all the time. Here's what happened. I'm not going to say that, or they said, you know. And it just takes investigations much, much longer. I think the fact that, you know, we put another person downstairs with that person, and I think that's had a direct effect on helping investigations. And so I see some positive things on the whole thing. And they're never going to say that we've got enough. Jeff don't answer, "I need more people." Believe it or not, the fire department says, "We need more people." We do the best we can with the money that we've got. And I feel like things are going in the right direction right now. And everybody's working as a team. You know, there's not, the formal fours are off everybody's shoulders and everybody's talking openly. And again, even when we can't disagree, we work on the 8% that we can. And I think Centaria is, I feel very good about things. But anyway, so much for that. Appreciate you allowing me to comment there.
Andre?
Yes, I would just like to congratulate Chief Anchison on his appointment. And I was very encouraged by what you said about safety. And I'm also encouraged by what Danny just said about the community helping with some investigations and telling what they see. I feel like I need to do a better job there as a councilman. I beat myself up quite a bit about that. But the CPD, the Centaria Police Department, is at the forefront of keeping Centaria safe. And if we offer a safe community, I think that's a way that we can build our tax base. And we're competing with area towns. And one of the things that people look at when they decide what city they want to live in is the crime rate and education and things of that sort. So I was very encouraged to hear you say, speak of safety. And I support you, and I know the council, Danny supports you, and we're just happy for you. That's it.
I also wanted to especially thank Brian Anchison, whose career I followed for some time now, for taking this position of leadership. We've known Brian for a long time. And so in some way, I consider it even a greater compliment, because you are a known entity and you've been put into this position of leadership. I know it's a difficult decision, because it's not an easy job. But I sincerely believe you're the person for it. And I think you'd be joining a great leadership staff that we have here in Centaria. And over the years, I've learned that not just the staff and the leadership, but the staff itself is just extraordinary. And I think Danny and Ray needs to be complimented for creating that environment. I want to mention just one thing here. From the beginning, when this council got together, we were encouraging the city manager to put some monies aside for demolitions. We did. And over the years, there's been several hundred thousand dollars set aside. But to get this in excess of $715,000 in grant money, the reason we got that was because our staff made Ida aware that we were trying, that we cared about our community. And that's how the grant money came in, because we showed that with people like Jeff, we were getting this done without their help. With their help, we could do so much more. So I'm really proud of our staff. And Brian, welcome to the position of leadership.
Councilman Smith?
I'd just like to congratulate Brian and thank you for taking the position. Appreciate it, and wish you all the best. And Marva, thanks again for the youth group and helping them out. And what you do, day in and day out, is just amazing. Just, I'm always amazed. So thanks again for what you did.
How can I say much more, Brian? Well, speaking for the rest of the council and myself, glad to have you as chief and looking forward to working with you in upcoming years. Also, Youth Commission, Marva, guys do a great job. Again, appreciate you doing that. Just one comment. I was here for the last meeting, Mr. Burris, when the mayor was discussing the comments from Mr. Coleman. I didn't, and I, and I'm sorry if someone felt that they were disrespectful, but I didn't feel that way. I certainly can't speak for the mayor, but I do, I was in the room, and I just wanted to mention that. So saying that, call for a adjournment.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I apologize not saying that, but one thing, and I always encourage Rinaldi to come up and talk about the situation to get the facts, but he never does, okay? But anytime he ever does call or anything, we call him back immediately. But the fact, to make a comment, we gave him $1.3 million. I want the council to know again that that was for the turning lane, the infrastructure money for the turning lane out there. That money there, the vacant piece of ground out there is going to bring in about $320,000 more a year into the Tiff District that will pay for that over 17 years, which is about $5 million. And so, and so whatever they're paying is going to, to four to one, pay what we give them back for the infrastructure there, as well as creating about another $300,000, $250,000, $300,000 worth of sales tax and adding, you know, 100 jobs, which are both a part-time and full-time, which I've said all along, you know, Walmarts are a double-edged sword. You know, you love them and hate them at the same time. A town like Centaria, you know, you need those things. In all honesty, I can't say we wouldn't have a hotel now, because we were getting close to getting one anyway with the strip mall and stuff. People were leaving, the citizens of Centaria. Unfortunately, we're enjoying much more to go to Salem and Mount Vernon, because this store's $75,000 instead of $152,000. And you want to keep the people here in Centaria, but you got to have the, you've got to have the place to make sure they don't have a reason to leave. And now, not only what that's happening, as we've talked before, you know, other towns' sales tax are going down, you know. Ours are not on the whole thing. And I'm actually seeing people that are coming from other areas that wasn't here before. And so even though those are very, very tough decisions, when you're doing things, we gave them the least percentage we've ever gave a business before. And so when you say giving, you know, what they gave us in return is 100 jobs, more jobs than they had, and over $10 million over the next 15 to 17 years to get that. And so I just want to make sure everybody defines of what giving things are in the rural world. And I do agree with you on this. You've got to give incentives. You don't give any more incentives than what you have to to make something happen.
You don't give any more incentives than what you have to, to make something happen for the best interest of the city. And we all know, you know, Walmarts, we know what Walmart is, you know, I said before, they're a double-edged sword, but don't think for a second, you know, there's a reason that they never came and didn't do it and sometimes, you know, decisions are seventy, thirty and part of it you don't like on the whole thing and so, with that number there and obviously, we can go on about the laundromat stuff and those comments and I don't require for calling that whole thing. I know I've spoke with an individual about a laundromat, about doing a laundromat and all that kind of information is, you know, just is not talked about, you know, before and I don't think anybody's ever given Mr. Coleman disrespect on the whole thing. I think contrary to the other thing, I think that, I remember one time when the mayor was willing to help him on some stuff and so, and the mayor thought enough, I'm going to appoint him to one of the boards here in town and so, with that, I think Rinaldi's comments possibly were, thoughts were misinterpreted, but anybody, especially Rinaldi, he knows the number, you know, and comments like that or thoughts, you know, on different things you do call, but I appreciate things like that to make sure you got the facts or at least the all facts, you know, and then form your own opinions, because many times your facts are just completely wrong, my friend. Thank you.
folks, good afternoon.
Second.
Call her over.
I have a motion by Councilman Sauer and a second by Councilman Smith to adjourn the meeting. Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Sauer?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor President Jones?
Me. Okay.